And Dan, I'll just let you get ready for YouTube Live.
And we are live.
All right, welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Narragansett Town Council September 21st, 2020 to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Who would stand one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Amen. Born and unborn.
All right, so we have several minutes for approvals. So we'll start with the March 30th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
Right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick, you're muted.
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
Jesse Pew, I.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I. Is there a motion to approve the May 18th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
DPOI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item number, motion, is there a motion to approve the May 26th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
All, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item, is there a motion to approve the June 1st, 2020 regular meeting?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the June 1st, 2020 executive session meeting minutes?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
My second.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the June 8th, 2020 emergency meeting?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Jill Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix abstain, I was not at that meeting. And finally, the June, so that's a motion approved four to zero, June 9th, 2020 work session, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. I'd like to take a moment of silent prayer for two individuals who served the town. First, Chief John Jack W. O'Donnell Jr., who was the police chief for most of the 90s and served on the department for a total of 27 years. Passed away on BJ Day, and Arlene Klingon Smith, who was the town clerk from 1968 to 1987. And I want to take a moment of silent prayer for the both of them and recognize their contributions to the town. All right, thank you, everyone. So we're moving to the consent agenda. Is there any item that an individual like, would like removed from the consent agenda? All right, I'm just going to, because there was a slight change to it, item number one, I'm going to remove. I think you all saw the email earlier on that. All right, so is there a motion to approve items two through nine of the consent agenda?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item one is a motion to grant permission to EK Properties LLC, Kyle Terrio, resident agent, and replacing Coastal Modular Homes of Ri with Empressa Modular to transport a modular home through Narragansett to Seven Homestead Road, Platte L, last 295 and 296. On or around October 26th is being changed to October 29th, 2020, subject to local and state regulations. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
Terry, I didn't do that as an amendment, but I just incorporated it in the motion itself. Is that okay for your purposes?
Perfect, thank you.
You got what you needed, okay, great.
I did.
Awesome, all right. So all in favor of item number one, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
And Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. That brings us to item number 10, which is a motion to approve the newly created job. These are all from the Human Resources Department. Item 10 is a motion to approve the newly created job description for Network and Security Administrator. Is there a motion?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All right, discussion. I know this is a position that we've had. The job description incorporates some of the work that needs to be done there, and they spent a workload increase, the individual in the position's done a really good job with the Zoom and with increased security needs that we have. So is there anything, I mean, as the town manager, that you wanted to elaborate on regarding this?
I do think the blue sheet's pretty self-explanatory. Dan's department has strapped, since I've been there, the increased security, the app request and searches for a database for items, and the new software that's popping up in all different departments. So it is a needed position. They haven't had an addition to that department over 30 years, and technology definitely has advanced in those 30 years and created more work and time and special skills needed to address.
All right, great. Is there any initial commentary from the council? I'll just go down quickly, starting with Mr. Lima?
I have none at this time.
Mr. Murray?
I'm all set.
Mr. Pew?
Comments?
Ms. Lawler?
I'm all set on this.
All right, anyone from the public?
Nobody's hand is raised?
All right, I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. And now an item 11?
Matt, could I say one thing on that, just to remind you that that was budgeted for January 1st, not, so we won't fill it until then.
All right, great. Item 11 is a motion to approve the filling of the Network and Security Administrator position. This is, is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
It's a discussion, so what the town manager just informed us that that is not being filled until January, is that correct, Jim?
Yes, that's correct. That's what was budgeted for.
And, yeah, great, okay. And is there any initial commentary from the council? Starting with Mr. Lima?
No, I don't have any at this time.
All right, Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
No comments.
Ms. Lawler?
The only question I have for you is, I mean, from the, from the position we just approved with Caleb's position, you know, you seemed, and I agree that that needed to be filled immediately. With this one, it doesn't seem to see this sense of urgency as I did with the other. And I wanted just to, just to ask you, is the urgency there, and will she's just not written as much so, or does this, does this need to be filled right away?
Well, when we discussed it and we prepared it, right now, we seem to be holding our own, but it is budgeted for the first of the year, and we have to go through the process, we have to advertise it and go through that before we even bring someone on full-time.
Okay. Only question I have, Matt.
Great, all right, is there anyone from the public?
Nobody from the public.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item 12 is a motion to approve the replacement of the planning technician in the Community Development Department. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
All right, this position is in the planning department, it was discussed at budget, with the start date for filling this coming up in the fall. Initial commentary from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
So again, this is planning department. I know the gentleman left in March. We did talk about filling this position sometime in the fall. Again, this process would take, Jim, if you could fill in roughly about what, it has to be advertised, so are we looking at possibly a month before we get somebody?
Probably more.
More than that. So September's gone, so we're looking at October, November, almost, almost the first of the year. So again, I know that we budgeted moving it back, we saved the taxpayers some money on this one, so that's all I have for questions.
All right, Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I have no problem.
Mr. Pew?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. DeLuca and his staff for working, kind of spread very thin over the last eight to 10 months, you know, with the bulk zoning and so many other things that we send their way. So I'm glad to see that we're going to be moving forward with this, and I just want to thank them again for working through it. So, thanks.
Ms. Lawler?
No, I have no comments, Matt.
All right, great. I know that we've been, we've talked about, and we've talked about with many of these positions, some tightening of our belts in town hall, we've taken a big hit, we also are in the budget, the 396,000 that was removed semi at the last minute on us, that we were able to piece together, try to keep our tax increase as low as possible, and we've been asking people to kind of put off some of these replacements, especially when we're looking at core, core competencies that we need to fill in other areas. So with anyone from the public, I'm going to ask the moderator.
We have one right now, Catherine Celebrato.
All right, go ahead, name an address, please, for the record.
Catherine Celebrato, 48 Earl's Court. My only comment is, I don't see any salary levels on any of these positions.
All right, I'm going to ask the town manager if that's something that you could provide. I don't think we have it attached information, but if you could follow up offline and provide that to Ms. Celebrato.
I can. It's a, Catherine, there is, there's a schedule set up for non-represented employees, it's arranged, the councils approve at various times during their, during their tenure. I will, it is public record, I will get it for you.
So none of these positions are union positions?
This one is.
I asked if any of these positions are union positions.
That one is, I'll contract and get you the salary for it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm going to ask the moderator if we have anyone else.
That's it.
All right, so I'm going to call the vote on that. All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, no, motion approved four to one. Item 13 is a motion to approve the filling of one vacancy seasonal labor within the water division. Is there a motion?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All right, discussion. I'm just going to briefly go to Jim on this, because it's a seasonal position, if he can just explain it briefly for us.
Yeah, that department's been, been very busy lately. When, the other labor they had was advanced up into a full-time position, and as such, that position has been vacant, and they just haven't been able to keep up with everything. It normally is filled, it's when, when the seasonal person got promoted to a full-time position, that work wasn't, they weren't able to get all that stuff done.
All right, any comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
I have none at this time.
Mr. Murray?
No comments.
Mr. Pew?
Comments.
Ms. Lawler?
I'm good.
All right, anyone from the public?
And nobody from the public.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. And item 14 is a motion to approve the police department's request to hire two probationary patrol officers. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
Any initial comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
I have none, police officers are needed.
Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
Just wanted to make a comment for the public that these are not new positions, so they'll be replacing two current officers, and it looks like if the second position does not become vacated, then that won't be filled. So it is contingent on filling those two spots, not new positions, that's all.
Ms. Lawler?
That was the same comment I was going to make. Thanks, Matt.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
UI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item 15 is a motion to accept the Department of Justice Community Policing Development Grant for $99,993. Is there a motion?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
Discussion. So this is important, because this is, the police departments across South County team together on this, and this is addressing mental health issues in the different cities and towns. So it's something that is already being done, it's important to note that's something that the town has been doing for some time and focusing on that. So I think it's worth noting that importance of that and partnering with the other cities and towns on mental health. Is there any commentary from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
I have none at this time.
Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
No comments, thank you.
Ms. Lawler?
I just want to thank Sean for bringing this a year in advance of what the country is now doing, taking a look at this, so great job, thank you, and thanks for the grant, too.
Thank you.
Any, all right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item 16 is a motion to approve the purchase of ammunition for the police department from Dutch AAA Police Supply in the amount of $13,198. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All right, comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
I know, I'd just like the police chief to maybe let the public know, they look at a number and they don't kind of really understand about, you know, what $13,000 does for ammo, but there's a lot behind this. And Sean, if you could explain the, you know, how many men are on the TO and the training that's involved, and then the mandatory training where they do have to qualify with their pistols to what this ammo actually is. People aren't familiar with how much ammo is, and ammo is very expensive right now, so you just give us a quick brief, so the public understands this.
Certainly, so this, this covers our ammunition purchase for the year for our handguns, both service ammo as well as qualifying. We do shoot twice a year, and also will cover the ammunition that will go with recruits to, to the police academy, they do quite a bit of shooting there to be trained. And then we have a group of officers who are, who are more specialists in tactical training, they train every month. So there's ammunition that's dedicated to them for the patrol rifle, and then that covers it.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
No comments.
Ms. Lawler?
I have nothing.
All right, is there anyone from the public? I'm going to ask our moderator.
We do, Stanley Wojciechowski?
Stanley, name an address, please, for the record.
Stanley Wojciechowski, Boston Nick Road. Actually, I had my hand up for the prior one, which was the grant. I'm so happy to see the grant. Monies that the taxpayer has put forward, and I congratulate the chief for doing it, and continue to find more of them. Thank you very much, chief. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else?
That's it.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item 17 and 18 come from the fire department. Item 17 is a motion to approve the annual service contract for the interoperable radio communication system from Motorola Incorporated in the amount of $33,288.96 for the fiscal year 2020-2021, and to authorize the town manager to sign the contract after review by the town solicitor. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
All right, I'm going to go down, so council, initial comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
I have none.
Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
All set.
Ms. Lawler?
No questions.
Okay, is there anyone from the public? Dan?
All right, no, no one from the public.
All right, great. All right, I'm going to call the vote on it. All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. And item 18 is a motion to approve the purchase of SCBA equipment for the fire department from Shipments Fire Equipment and Company Incorporated, in the total of amount of $112,000. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
All right, discussion. My understanding is this is coming from FEMA and Homeland Security grant money. I just don't want to say that that's in its entirety unless I am correct on that. Either Jim or the fire chief, could you weigh in on that?
Sure. Good evening, I'd be happy to. This is, this is a self-contained breathing apparatus, equipment grant, 95% of which is paid for by the federal award, 5% is a match requirement, so it covers everything but 50, I believe it's about $5,600 would be the town's portion of that.
All right, thank you. And that's FEMA and Homeland Security, or is that, is both, right?
It's, it's an all-encompassing FEMA, FEMA federal grant through the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program.
All right, thank you to you and the fire department for obtaining that, appreciate that, we only put up 5%, so I'm sorry I misspoke, I thought it was 100, but I, I, I that's why I called on you. All right, all right, any, anyone from the public, thank you.
One from the public, Stanley Wojciechowski?
All right, go ahead, name an address for the record.
Stanley Wojciechowski, Boston Nick Road. Again, I want to thank the chief for the grants, you know, purchasing, finding the grants, utilizing the grants, and saving us money. Can't leave him out. Thank you very much, chief. Keep on, keep on searching. Thank you.
All right, any final comments from the council, Mr. Lima?
None.
Mr. Murray?
I'm all set.
Mr. Pew?
No comments.
Ms. Lawler?
Nice job, chief, thank you.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
All set, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item 19 is from the IT department, it's a motion to approve the annual maintenance fee renewal for the executive time and attendance system from Tyler Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $31,318. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
This is a renewal, any comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
I have none.
Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
Oh, no comments.
Ms. Lawler?
No questions.
All right, is there anyone from the public? I'm going to ask the moderator.
We have one, Karen Shubshalowicz.
All right, name an address, please, for the record.
Karen, you need to unmute.
Karen Shubshalowicz, 63 Wander Street. Actually, I'd wanted to comment, I think Scott does an excellent, excellent job of trying to get as many grants as he can for the department, and I also think his nursing background gives him a strong lead in his job in meeting the requirements of like the rescue and all that. I think it's wonderful, all the grants he gets. I wish we could get a lot more grants, so, thank you, Scott.
All right, is there anyone else from the public?
That's it.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. Item 20 is a motion to approve the purchase of one new 2019 international model.
Eight o'clock, did you want?
Yeah, thank you. I just thought of that, and then I
Thank you.
I just looked at the clock, and then I forgot. Thank you. Eight o'clock, public hearing slash decision. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing on a petition from St. Thomas More Church and St. Veronica Chapel for the partial road abandonment of a portion of Joy Lane. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
This date for this is December 21st at 8:00 PM. All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. And we have a motion to refer the petition for partial road abandonment of Joy Lane to the Planning Board for Review and Recommendation. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second, Richard Lima.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Murray?
I.
Mr. Pew?
SCPUI.
Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, I.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, I.
Matt Manix, I, motion approved five to zero. All right, thank you, Terry. Item number 20 is a motion to approve the purchase of one new 2019 international model 7300 four-by-two heavy-duty truck with 11 foot snowplow and sander with anti-icing system from Coastal International Trucks LLC using the Greater Boston Police Council contract in the amount of $134,779. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
Right, so we know that we have the snow season coming up. This is a time of year that we are looking to um, get um, ready for that. Uh, Mr. DeChico has anything that he would like to say at the outset? I'll turn it over to him.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, so this is to replace the oldest truck that we have in the fleet now, which is a two thousand one Sterling. Um, that Sterling now has a eleven-foot Monroe stainless steel chassis mount sander. That sander will be removed from that truck and transferred to this new cabin chassis. Um, this will be the third truck that this sander is placed on. Um, so we were able to have a significant savings on this truck. Normally, we'd be at about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand for a truck of this caliber, so. Uh, the comment one thirty-four is a, uh, is a big savings.
Hmm, great. All right, any comments, initial comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
I have no comments.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I just want, this is a, this is in the budget, right? I mean, this has been part of the capital improvement budget, correct?
Yes.
This has all been slated. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Pew?
Uh, no questions.
Mister, um, Ms. Lawler?
No questions.
And is there anyone from the public?
Uh, we have one, Stanley Wojciechowski?
All right, Stanley, name and address for the record.
Stan Wojciechowski, Boston Nick Road. Uh, the positive input here, it's a two thousand and nineteen, so at least we seem to have a little bit of savings. We don't have to uh. Get a brand-new truck. Yeah, it's a new truck, but it's a, you know, it's nineteen, so you should have a price break there. That's a positive. But I, I'm looking at the other side, and I only plowed one time last year. First time this has happened in forty-six years where I've only plowed one time. That means the snow, it was more than three inches. Well, we had one storm, three inches that I had to plow. So therefore, I'm wondering if we could maybe postpone this year and see if contractors, we could hire and line up contractors. To try and uh fill in the plowing needs, just to test and see whether this year is part of that global warming situation where we don't have the snow we used to. Uh, what, what, what about a one-year postponement on this truck? Is the frame rotted or is it absolutely undrivable? Just curious. Thank you.
All right, um, I, we know that the, as I said, this is, we're preparing for the snow season, and we were fortunate not to have a major one, and I do, this was um. This was budgeted in the budget, so um, all in favor, unless there's any other comments from the council? All right, I'm going to start with Mr. Lima, all in favor.
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Oh, boy. I'll, nay, no.
Uh, Mr. Pew?
SCPU, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, aye.
Matt Manix, aye. Motion approved four to one. Item number twenty-one is a motion to approve the purchase of one new John Deere zero-turn mower from Deere and Company delivered through United Ag and Turf in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-six cents. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
Um, discussion, uh, starting with Mr. Lima, any initial comments?
No, again, this is, uh, this was budgeted, um. And. Mike, is this, is this replacing uh something that we have?
This is replacing in like a nineteen ninety-eight uh zero-turn mower that we got handed down to us from the parks department.
Right.
That we're constantly throwing money at to keep on the road. Um, so this, this mower is for all of the manicured right-of-ways that you see in town that Danny Northup is constantly mowing. Um, this is a lot of the state right-of-way shoulders that we mow that they don't get to, so that the town looks. Uh, decent, not overgrown. Um, this is more for the, like I said, the manicured uh right-of-ways that we maintain. Gibson Ave. Point Judith Road up by the mobile station, um, up and down one oh eight. Uh, uh, all around the neighborhoods, um, where we have manicured right-of-ways. This is a finish mower for that type of mowing.
Okay. No other comments.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
No comments.
Ms. Lawler?
I'm good.
Um, I'm going to ask if there's anyone from the public?
Uh, we have one, Catherine Celebrato.
All right, Catherine, name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Celebrato, forty-eight-year-old's court. I just want to thank Mike for um, keeping the island around the water tower looking neat. Um, it seems to be every week somebody's coming and mowing it and looks a lot better than it has in the past, so thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, um, anyone else from the public?
Yep, we have one more. Stanley Wojciechowski?
All right, Stanley, name and address for the record.
Stan Wojciechowski, Boston Nick Road. I also want to commend Mike, uh, his, uh, his staff is out here mowing very often and keeping, uh, keeping the sides, uh, well trimmed. Uh, he's doing a good job out there. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. Is there anyone else from the public?
That's it.
And I'm going to call the vote on this, starting with Mr. Lima, all in favor?
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
SCPU, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, aye.
Matt Manix, aye. Motion approved five to zero. Item number twenty-two is a motion to approve the purchase of winter road salt from Champion Salt LLC at fifty dollars and one cent per ton delivered for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one winter season per the city of Newport's bid award. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
Uh, again, this is the salt, which we all know is very important. Uh, Mr. DeChico, is anything you want to add to that as we're preparing for the winter and purchasing the salt?
Uh, no, I mean, the, the price is only up about three dollars a ton from last year. I think we were at forty-seven. Um, this is pretty much the pricing statewide. State MPA is still up around fifty-seven, so it's much better pricing than if we use the state MPA as we have in the past. Um, solar salt, a little less abrasive than rock, which we use for our brine operations, which. We use a lot less sand and salt than we ever have in the past. Um, you know, I think we bought maybe three thousand yards of salt last year as compared, uh. Sorry, yeah, three thousand yards of salt last year as compared to a normal, uh, uh, sorry, not three thousand yards. Uh, three to four hundred yards of salt compared to the eleven hundred yards of salt that we normally buy.
Great, I'm just going to go down. Any initial comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
None.
And Mr. Murray?
I'm all set.
Mr. Pew?
No comments.
Ms. Lawler?
No questions.
All right, um. Anyone from the public?
Nobody from the public.
All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
SCPU, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, aye.
Matt Manix, aye. Motion approved five to zero. The next item, um, the next items are from the Parks and Recreation Department. Item number twenty-three is a motion to approve the purchase of one new two thousand nineteen Ford E-three-fifty Starcraft All-Star twenty-two-foot bus. For the community center from Creative Bus Sales using the HGAC Buy Purchasing Program in the amount of sixty thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All right, this is a two thousand seven vehicle that's being replaced with the, from the Parks and Rec Department. Is there any initial commentary from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
Oh, I have none at this time. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Murray?
I'm all set.
Mr. Pew?
No questions.
Ms. Lawler?
I'm good.
Any comments from the public? I'm going to ask our moderator.
We have one, Stanley Wojciechowski?
All right, Stanley, name and address, please, for the record.
Stan Wojciechowski, Boston Nick Road. Uh, is it possible that, uh, we can add a few more years on the existing vehicle? Is it, uh, really uninspectable? Is it, uh, absolutely have to be replaced? And, you know, I don't want to replace a vehicle just because it's old. Uh, especially here, I don't know how many seniors are running all over the place on a bus, so what's happening there? I expect that we're not going to put the mileage on the buses like we used to for the community center. So I don't know if, uh, can we postpone this purchase, uh, at least until the virus is gone and we start using it? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Stanley. Is there anyone else from the public?
There is, Karen Shavshalowicz.
All right, name and address, please, for the record.
All right, Karen Chabshaw at sixty-three Wanda Street strongly support the uh acquisition of a new vehicle for the seniors. We include, I think, according to the last census, twenty percent of the population. The old vehicle was constantly breaking down constantly, and people had doctor's appointments, and that's what it was. Used for basically your shopping, uh, like on Thursday and doctor's appointments and. If you have a doctor's appointment, it's important and you can't get there any other way. It's really important, and it was breaking down very frequently. Quite old, so I really support the use of the, um. Senior replacement vehicle. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call the vote on this. All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
SCPU, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Aye, Jill Lawler, aye. And just before, just to thank Steve and his staff for all the extra work that that we've done for our seniors during this time of COVID. Steve, how many meals have you and and Karen delivered or gotten out there?
Well, I haven't, I don't have that number right now, but I can get that to you.
A lot. So thank you very much for what you've done.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, Matt Manix, aye. Motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-four is a motion to approve the purchase of one new two thousand twenty international CV. Five fifteen four-by-four dump truck from Coastal International Trucks LLC using the greater Boston Police Council Cooperative Procurement Contract in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All right, um, Steve, um, you want to just briefly comment on this? I know items twenty-four and twenty-five are related.
So this is part of our capital improvement plan, and thank you for allowing me to discuss this one. Uh, so this, this truck is used, uh, not only during the winter for snow plowing and parks maintenance responsibilities. It's also, uh, used during the summer to take beach debris. So, uh, this is a two thousand seven dump truck. We actually, uh, three years ago, we replaced this, uh, the dump body and put a stake body on it, so. We, um, Mike, Mike can tell you as, as far as repairs, but we've been told, we've been told numerous times that the body is starting to rot out, uh, and and it's. And, and it's, uh, end of its lifetime, and we need to replace it. That's why we put it on a capital replacement, five-year capital replacement plan to replace. And put it before you back in April to have this, uh, replaced this year. So it's, it's needed. Uh, it's, uh, well-used throughout the year, not only at the beach, but again, uh, during the winter, winter months with snow plowing and for other, uh, maintenance activities for parks and recreation.
All right, thank you. Um, any comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
None.
Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
No comments.
Ms. Lawler?
The only comment I want to make is potentially in the future, can we look at maybe incorporating the snow plowing and the grass cutting within the Parks and Rec, also DPW and even the school? Is there a way that maybe we can share our resources a little bit better and save some, some tax dollars there? Thank you.
All right, um, anyone from the public? I'm going to ask our moderator.
There is, Stanley Wojciechowski?
Yes.
All right, Stanley, name and address, please, for the record.
Stan Wojciechowski, Boston Nick Road. I want to thank Steve. Uh, I guess that's about the time you get rid of a truck when it's kind of rotting out. And definitely not considered not usable, that's when we have to make the decision, and I, and I appreciate it waiting that long. Wait till it's unusable, not just trade up because it's on the budget. That, uh, you know, I, I, that's all I hear. It's on the budget. It's on the budget. We're going to do it. No, let's stop doing it unless the vehicle is not safe, let's say, or can't do its job. Just want to change the idea as we move forward. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Stanley. All right, I'm, uh, anyone else from the public?
That's it.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
SCPU, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, aye.
Matt Manix, aye. Motion approved five to zero. Item twenty-five is a motion to approve the purchase of one new ten-foot Fisher, Fisher snowplow package for one two thousand twenty international dump truck from Dehanna Truck and Utility Equipment. Using the greater Boston Police Council Cooperative Procurement Contract in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. Is there a motion?
So move Jill Lawler.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
Right, um, this is related to item twenty-four. If there's no comments from the council. Then I'm going to see if there's comments from the public?
Nobody from the public.
All right, then I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
SCPU, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, aye.
Matt Manix, aye. Motion approved five to zero. Item number twenty-six is a motion to authorize the town manager to sign all the necessary documentation after solicitor review to authorize a grant from FEMA in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
This comes from the Community Development Department, and I believe it's related to disaster mitigation, and the majority of it comes from FEMA. Sixty-five hundred comes from the Harbor Island Improvement Association, and sixty-five hundred comes from the town. Is, um, is that correct? Um, I'm going to ask the town manager, make sure I just characterize that correctly.
Most of the towns match would be, uh, in trade, uh, man-hours, office work. And that, that type of, we don't anticipate any financial cost to the town. It could be a minimal amount. I spoke to Mr. DeLuca today. So there could be a minimal amount, but, uh, not anything significant, not as high as that, that number.
So the sixty-five hundred would be in kind.
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right, the, um, I'll just go down quickly. The council members with initial comments, Mr. Lima?
None.
Mr. Murray?
All set.
Mr. Pew?
I'm glad to see this. I know that residents in that, uh, area have been waiting years for the ball to get rolling on this, so this is great to see, and it looks like minimal expense for the town, so, looks good.
Uh, Ms. Lawler?
Yeah, I also agree. This is something they've been waiting for. There's only one road in and out of Harbor Island, so. Um, thank you, Mike, for, for getting this grant and moving forward, and thank you to Harbor Island Association for, for offering to, uh, help some of this to the town. Appreciate it.
Um, I'm going to ask the moderator if there's anyone from the public?
There is, Stanley Wojciechowski?
All right, name and address, please, for the record.
Stan Wojciechowski, Boston Nick Road. Again, I don't want to leave out, uh, all of here, all the persons who will pursue the grants and get them through. And again, I'm going to thank Mike, uh, I have to thank everyone for looking at the grants, processing, do what they got to do to get the grants. You know, it's extra work, and it does save us money, and I appreciate that they're doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, um, all in favor? All right, all in favor, starting with Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
SCPU, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, aye.
Matt Manix, aye, motion is approved five to zero. Item 27 comes from our town solicitor, it's a solicitor. It's a motion to amend the existing lease agreement between the town and Peer Liquors Incorporated. Is there a motion?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All right, discussion. So this, as everyone knows, there's a lawsuit that was filed by Lori Kelly, Susan Bonano, Win Hames, Love Your Library, and the Friends of the Library, and Gil Bane against the town in Narragansett. And that resulted in an order which essentially forbid the town from changing the terms of the lease agreement between the town and Peer Liquors, whose business is on the property the town purchased from Gil Bane. This order has essentially tied the town's hands and prevented us from selling the property or changing the terms of that lease that the town has inherited from Gil Bane. That lease expired a few months ago and has continued only on a month-to-month basis because of the court order. This order has not been in the best financial interest of the town. It's something with which I've had a lot of problems with. It's essentially created a three-way sale made. The plaintiffs do not get to start building their new library. The town cannot recoup the $2.8 million spent to purchase the old IGA buildings, and Peer Liquors' future as a business hangs in the balance. Some advocates of the IGA move have actually indicated a desire to kick Peer Liquors out of the property, which is an unacceptable outcome for anyone who understands or cares about the plight of, plight of small businesses and our small business owners, and something which I don't support. However, the plaintiffs and Peer Liquors have come to an agreement that partially unties the town's hands by allowing the town and Peer Liquors to extend their lease more than just on a month-to-month basis. This partial lifting of the order allows essentially a 10-year extension of the lease rather than a monthly extension. Once the town received news of the settlement, it began drafting an amendment to the lease to allow this 10-year extension. Again, this is only a partial lifting of the restrictions under the existing order. It applies to the lease that the town took over after Gil Bane sold the property in 2018. It provides better protection for a small business, namely Peer Liquors, than the current order does. There's, our solicitor will go over the specific terms of this amendment to the lease. It's relatively short. The settlement agreement would remove Peer Liquors as defendant in this case and as contingent on the town voting to extend this lease by mid-October. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mark right now if he wants to just go over the amendment to the lease that is attached to this item.
Good evening. First, let me say that the, the amendment to lease approved today is still subject to court approval, as is the settlement agreement that was, that has been signed by the various plaintiffs and Peer Liquors. Having said that, the amendment is pretty straightforward. The settlement agreement, which lays out the terms under which the parties had agreed, laid out a, a five-year term extension with the option for Peer Liquors to renew for an additional five years, making the possible total term 10 years. So the agreement reflects that, it reflects extending the term for five years. It puts in an option consistent with what's in the settlement agreement. And the, the other provision in there that, that's a variation from the original lease is the, the rent during the extended term would be increased by approximately 5%. It's 4.9% starting in year six. Other than that, there are no material changes to the lease that was executed and put in place in 2011. So it complies with what the parties agreed to. Of course, the town owns the property and must determine whether they want it, you know, you want, the town wants them to release, and if these are the terms under which the town council wants to proceed. So I put that out there for your consideration because it's consistent with the settlement agreement. And the rent increase was something that we had discussed in executive session during litigation discussion. So that's, that's about it.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go down and have initial comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima.
Once again, I mean, the plaintiffs and the parties of Peer Liquor have agreed to this. Everybody knows my feeling is I want them to buy the building, hope someday they can buy it, have their liquor store where they actually own the building. But that's all I have to say at this point.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, Mike, I had a couple of questions.
You have?
Okay, all right, the lease ended June 1st. That was a we had, I guess, is that all that money in escrow? And then we get paid up to September, you know, when this lease begins?
No, my understanding, I'm not sure if Chris is still on the call. My understanding is that they have been paying holdover rent in the amount of their normal base rent.
Base rent, okay.
Yeah, so I don't think, I don't think they've been holding rent. Christine confirmed that, so they're not, we're not, they're not in arrears.
Okay, all right, I just want to check on that. All right, is there a fee schedule? I looked through everything. I didn't see a fee schedule for CAM charges, insurance, and those items. Is that something we can put together?
As far as the lease, the, if you read the original lease, Patrick, there is a provision for Peer Liquors to share, share in a, in an increase over the costs that were in place at the time the lease was signed. And I, I'm not sure what that increase has been, but I, Christine, I'm sure can put together.
I'm just looking for a breakdown for that particular lease, what their portion is, and just a breakdown of the utilities, just to get a, you know, just to get a sense of, you know, what the, what the gross, because it's base, base lease triple net. So I just wanted a, a total, you know, what the cost was.
Well, their, their property, just for clarification, their property is separately metered for utilities. So they're actually paying their actual expense.
Right.
With regard, the way the lease was drafted and entered into by Gil Bane and Peer Liquors, the operating expenses that existed at the time, there's a mechanism in the lease that sets a base for that. And at that base, their base rent included their portion of the CAM charges. There is a mechanism in there for them to share in any increases in operating or, or common area charges. But it would be, and we can look at it, and Christine can give you a summary, but it's going to be relatively de minimis. The bulk of their expenses are, are actual incurred expenses.
Okay, so this is basically a modified gross lease, then?
Basically, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Taxes. Now, since we own the building and we just, they're just paying, how's that work? Because we don't pay taxes to ourselves.
Yeah, the way, the way, again, the original lease was written. So Gil Bane obviously had a tax bill. And Gil Bane had factored in to what Peer Liquors' portion of that tax bill was when they entered into the lease. So that, the original proration of taxes were, were
14%?
Whatever it was, whatever their rated amount was, was built into their, their base rent when the lease was signed. And then again, there's a, there was a mechanism for Gil Bane to go back and increase the rent. It's called additional rent. For any rent increases that Gil Bane incurred, they would be able to offlay Peer Liquors pro rata share of that. So the reality is the town obviously is not taxed on that building. The base rent that Peer Liquors is paying includes the original prorated share of their taxes. What they're not getting now as a result of the town's ownership is any additional share of tax increases that would have occurred in the last five or six, seven years.
But moving forward?
Moving forward, it is, right now, there's no, the provision reads, you know, we're now the landlord. So any increase that the landlord incurs, they, we can offlay our pro rata share. Obviously, we don't have any, so we can't lay any off. So we would have to redraft a provision in there or increase, increase the rent by a certain percentage.
Right, so, so moving forward, we need to amend the lease to include taxes and to include, you know, increasing taxes by the town for 14% of that building. Is that something we can do?
We can get an estimate of what that tax number would be, and we could certainly, you know, put a, increase the base rent in that amount.
Right, because it is a commercial, you know, portion of the, what we own. And, and to me, I think taxes, you know, should be paid, you know, even though we do own the building. Does that make sense, or?
If that's what you want to do, we can certainly do that. It's easy enough to draft.
All right, because there's a big thing about how much lost revenue, lost revenue. Okay, so now, you know, we have an opportunity to get 14% of it back, plus CAM charges being paid. You know, their lease pays for the CAM charges, so that, that's a plus. Now, a couple of people called me, and in your, your addendum, it says renew automatically. Now that, now, as you know, that, that's just basically standard terminology for commercial lease. When you have an option, and, and it won't renew automatically if either side within six months has a written, you know, not to move forward with the option. So is that correct? So that's just a standard term in, in a commercial lease, correct?
It's, it's a standard term, but that's not the way it's drafted. I believe, let me just refer to, but I believe the option to renew, Patrick, is in Peer Liquors' discretion, not the town's.
Right. Then they're going to notify six months before the end of the
Yeah, so it, so it renews unless they give notice if they don't want to renew.
Right.
It can be, it could be drafted that it doesn't renew unless they give us notice to renew. But generally, the option to renew is theirs and theirs alone. Otherwise, it's really not an option.
Okay, all right. I think, let me see. Think I cut everything, and the lease ends 8/31/2025, and then the second lease begins, correct?
That's correct.
And then that one would end 8/31/2030.
That's correct.
Okay, geez, I'll be on the wagon by then. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pew?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to see this. This is something that we basically proposed about two years ago. And we're right there, so we ended up where we started. I'm glad to see Peer Liquor have some stability. You know, 10 years is a pretty good chunk of time. And I think that, you know, this could get extended beyond that. That's always a possibility. But 10 years definitely adds that stability that, that they're looking for. I do have a few questions about the amendment for Mark and the lease. Just want to make sure I'm clear on everything. I guess just start with a smaller detail. In one point, oh, and the other thing is, I know the public doesn't have access to this lease. It wasn't attached to the packet. So I will be referencing the original lease. I'll try to explain the parts we're going through for the public as we go. But 1.5 is commencement date. And then, you know, we're, we're working off the old lease. And it says the commencement date shall be June 1st, 2010. But we don't have an amendment to change that date in our amendments. So, you know, it is an official lease. Shouldn't we be changing the copy to reflect the actual dates? Or is that not an issue?
Well, I think the way I drafted it, we, we can go about it in a number of ways. But the way we drafted it, Jesse, is we, we changed the, in section one of the amendment, we changed the definition of term. So, I mean, we, we could go back and, and do that, but I don't think it's necessary with the reference to section 1.4. So we're modifying the actual term. I don't think we need to redefine the commencement date, but I think it, I think it works the way it's drafted.
Okay, because it's in there a couple of times with that date, so I just want to bring that up. It seems like a pretty easy fix, but I will defer to you on that detail. I do want to talk a little bit about the taxes and the CAM fees, same thing that Patrick brought up. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on it. Because I was reading through the contract or the lease, and then they have the base rent, which is $51,263.50 for the year. And then they do specify operating costs and taxes as separate payments. I know you said there was a mechanism that made it, that pulls that into the gross.
Well, I think I said additional rent, but there, there is a mechanism for charging Peer Liquors for incremental tax increases, which is set forth in section 3.2 of the original lease and 3.3. And it's triggered after year three of the lease. And it talks about their, their sharing in incremental costs, not, not the total cost. Because, like I said, there was a base starting point with, with CAM charges and taxes factored into the base rent. So they were addressing increases that occurred after year three of the, of the lease term. And that's what I was referring to as additional rent. There's a, there's a mechanism for capturing increases that the landlord incurs above and beyond what was in place at the time this lease was signed.
Okay, I see that. I see that third year thing. Where, where does it say that everything is added into the base rent?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't state it. It doesn't state it. It's, it's implied. When, when Gil Bane, I, since Gil Bane took the time to put provisions in here to address additional charges, one has to assume that they, they took into effect the charges that were in place at the time they signed the lease. So they came up with, they came up with their rent number. I haven't talked to them, but based on the way it's drafted and my experience with commercial leases, they looked at what the, what the rent was, what the taxes were, what their share of taxes were on a pro rata basis, and what their share, their share, meaning the tenant share of CAM charges would have been. Put that in base, and then they put a mechanism to deal with increases after that. Otherwise, there would have been a separate breakout for taxes and CAM charges on day one, which there's not in this lease.
Got it.
They're only talking about incremental changes.
Okay. Okay, so it says tenant shall pay landlord as additional rent tenants proportionate share of all increases in taxes in the third year.
Right.
I see that. Okay. And then it does reference, you know, the actual taxes incurred by the landlord for the 2010 calendar year. So again, it's that, those old dates, but you're saying that any of those old dates aren't going to matter?
No, because this is, this, this incremental obligation continues throughout the term. It's just not on a fixed date. It triggered, it's triggered after the expiration of year three. And then they're supposed to do a reevaluation annually. And then they would be billed additional rent for their incremental share of increased taxes, should there be any. And the same with CAM charges, operating costs.
Okay. Okay, in the second, in the extension, so after five years, when you get into year six, there's that extension, and we're proposing a increase of, up to, it would be $19.40, $19.40 per square foot, right? For that extended term?
You're talking about section three in the option to extend, number three?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then would that
For base rent, I'm sorry.
Yep, for the base. So then, that base rent would also assume taxes and operating char, operating costs as well. So then, any increases would only be the last two years of the term?
No, the way that, the way, what we did not do is we did not modify the language in the lease dealing with incremental increases in taxes and operating expenses. So that's been So that's been triggered after year three, continues annually. Um, so no, that that's a base rent increase. Um, but any any increases in cam charges and taxes, we we which we talked about with Patrick. Uh, would, we would do a look back every year. Um, and charge them as additional rent for their share of increases.
Okay, so, and this might be just be a repeat of what Patrick was asking, but whatever cam charges we pay to Gilbane.
Yes.
Um, we will be then. Charging pure liquor, what percentage?
Um, well, what we need to do is, um, we need to see what the what the cam charges were. And and I'll have to work with Christine on it, I'm not, I'm not sure what the calculation is. Done every month or whether it's a look back every year, but um. It's, it should be a look back every year, um, but there was um. Cam charges obviously on the date that existed on the date of this lease. And um, you would then look at the end of year three, so that puts you sometime probably at the end of two thousand fourteen. Um, or sometime in the middle of two thousand fifteen. Um, you'd look at what the cam charges were. And then I I would suggest doing it either annually or quarterly, you would then, every year, so in. Gilbane, I'm sure in 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 fifteen or sixteen, look back and said, okay, the cam charges previous year were a hundred dollars. This year, they're ten dollars, and pure liquor's share of that additional expense. Um, is X and we build them, we build them that amount. Um, again, uh, based on what I mean, I've only seen a few years of cam charges. And because of the lack of snow and and some other factors, the building being empty, cam charges have actually not increased. Um, so we're talking about very small dollars um in the scheme of things, but that's how you would do it, and. Um. What is their percentage uh of the building? I think Patrick's at fourteen percent, I think it's somewhere around there.
Yes, so that'd be fourteen percent of the total, five, five percent of the uh fifty-seven thousand square feet.
Yeah, so if if the cam charges, you know, were increased, um, a hundred dollars, they would be billed fourteen dollars.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, and like I said, when I, I mean, from the time we bought the building to now. Um, that's the historical information I have seen, and the cam charges have not gone up, so. Um. And and taxes, we'd have to take a look at, but um, again, we've had, you know, small tax increases uh to date, so. We're not talking large sums, but yes, they would be obligated for fourteen percent of the, yeah, we're gonna have to. Put a mechanism in place for the taxes or come up with another way to to do that, um, which we can do. Um, we maybe we can just use the the, any tax increase on the commercial stuff, um, as in. As a, as the factor to um, increase the amount and then just charge them fourteen percent of that, there's there's a number of ways to skin the cat. But um, it's it's gonna be small no matter what.
Okay, um. In the tenants proportionate si, share, so that's one point one zero in the original lease. It does get into the specifics of what percentage that unit is in the shopping center.
Yeah, we're exactly right.
But, and that's fine, I mean, it out, it lays it all out there.
Yeah.
The information's wrong.
What's wrong?
Well, all the information, because it's all based on the full shopping center. But we are basing this on the Belmont Building and Pure Liquor, that's the new relationship.
Uh, I, I think when they broke it out, they they did break it out to the, to the building. Um, I'll go back and look at it, I I went and verified those numbers. Um, so their percentage of the total space, well, we can, we can get a gut check on it, we know roughly what it is, right? Um.
Well, those numbers, fifty-seven thousand for the, as a total complex, Gilbane owns the entrances, he gets a cam charge.
Right.
Now we have uh two, three different owners now, so.
Yeah.
Not three, but but Gilbane has that last piece of the pie.
Yeah.
Uh, on the contract, so that new owner would be collecting camp charges.
Yeah, I think the ultimate, yeah, I think the ultimate piece that Pure Liquor is paying is is the right percentage. Um, so they have it as a factor, right? Right, um, Jesse, they have a factor, it's the total shopping plaza, but it happens to be the right percentage, um, even if we broke it out. Um, to that one building, it it's the same percentage. Um.
Oh, but this is, they have a four point eight six percent.
Correct.
But for us, it's gonna be fourteen percent.
No, four, four point percent represents their, the, um, I've actually got a little backwards. Represents their portion of the fifty-seven.
Yeah, that's right.
Thousand square feet, okay, now, if if we're just talking about our property. Gilbe, um, Gilbe, the pure liquor is is fourteen percent of the total Belmont IGA complex. So.
Yep.
But the four percent is correct, uh, be, it it all depends on what you're using as the basis. And the total, the total square footage was used, so four percent is correct, we could go in and redefine it, but. It it just, it it's the same number, so I didn't, I didn't tweak it.
Okay, so using the full shopping center as the base, you think is fine, cuz it's still.
I think so.
Okay, alright, that's fine, uh. Alright, I'm good, thank you, Mark.
Mark, I have one more quick question, um, now this lease can be amended any any time along this five years, as long as both parties agree, right?
Um.
For whatever, I mean, say, say the liquor store wants to expand their um loading dock. Or they wanna do some work on the outside, we can always amend the lease to accommodate, correct? I like to see him have more of a smoother operation over there, I mean, that was their intent, and, you know, I mean, if we can help him out, Matt, I'd be, I'd be on board with that. To kinda, you know, kinda be a good neighbor.
Yeah, I I would say this, that um, is as long as litigation is pending and that that order is in place. Um, we, we would, we would need court approval um to to do it, I don't. I don't think it would be a problem.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the future when the lawsuit is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, a, absolutely, when it's resolved, the town will be free to do whatever they want.
And as long as both parties agree, we can amend that lease at any time, correct?
Correct, yes, alright.
Mark, I'm sorry, I just had one other little thing I forgot to ask, so this modified lease. Um. Pure Liquor still has to agree to this, they haven't agreed to it yet, so what we're doing is basically creating a lease that we're gonna offer them. And they still need to agree to the terms.
That's correct.
Alright, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, Mark, that was an awful lot of conversation between Patrick and and Jesse yourself, and I'm sure people at home are trying to piece it together. Could you just really, very simply just walk through it and tell us, at what time do they, does, would Pure Liquor? Begin to pay camp fees and taxes uh to the town, um, there was an email circulating today. Um, actually by um by Mr. Riley, who's Mrs. Kelly's um husband, accusing the town of potentially having a sweetheart deal. And I wanna make sure that we are as transparent as possible with 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 what we are offering Pure Liquor.
So we're um, we're basically offering Pure Liquor the same. Um, lease under the same terms and conditions uh that uh they had when Gilbane was the owner. Um, the, the calculation with regard to increased, uh, their share of increased taxes. Um, obviously, we would need to address that separately, uh, that increase in taxes ceased to exist. Um, and we purchased the building, so theoretically, um, really not even theoretically, actually. Uh, effective the day we bought it, uh, they they would not realize, the town would not realize any increased. Taxes to pass on to Pure Liquors, so that is a um, that's a provision, again. We're talking. Fourteen percent of the Belmont Building, taxes that would be on the Belmont Building itself. Um, fourteen percent of any increase year over year, um, so again, small dollars, but. That's, that's the one piece that they would at this point, um, as drafted, because we're not incurring that. Uh, as Gilbane was, they would not be, that would not be passed on to them. So we would need to. We would need to amend the lease, um. To. Expressly state how they're gonna be assessed that amount, and how it's gonna be calculated, since the town is not incurring it.
And we have every intention of doing so, thank you. Um, I I just have to say that same as Rick, I I really would like these folks to own this building. I don't think it's appropriate for town to actually own a property and rent out to a liquor store. The other thing I I wanted to say, um, I don't know how this could could make them have a little comfort, that they can have five years with potential of five more. There is a a ballot initiative put on by one of the individuals currently suing the town, Susan Bonato. And that ballot initiative, if passed, specifically states that that building in its entirety, including the the piece of part, property currently leased by. By Pure Liquor, can only be used as a library, so I can't see how anybody with a, without a red face can say that these people must feel some comfort. On if getting a lease um tonight, that's all I have to say before we hear public comment, thank you.
Matt, if I, if I may jump in, um, if 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 it's the desire of the town council to. Um. Address the, the incremental share that um Pure Liquor would have with regard to taxes. Um, we will have to modi, modify the amendment, because the amendment. Uh, does not, does not take into account um. The fact that the town is not incurring it, and I think one can read that original lease to say, because the town's not, the town as a landlord is not actually incurring that expense. Uh, I think there's a good argument to say that we don't have a basis to pass on the incremental piece of that. Um, so there's one of two ways to go, in my opinion, very simply, either. Um, drafted so that it's, it's not based on what we actually incur, but it's based on the uh what the tax increase would have been. Had the landlord been a taxpaying um entity, or we come up with a um. With a um, some type of language that makes it clear on how it will be calculated, for. Example, if the commercial tax rate goes up two percent per thousand, it's two percent per thousand times X dollars, we can hardwire that number in. Times fourteen percent, or do it for the plaza as a whole. Um, so we can, we can make it a finite number, or we can go through this exercise every year, uh, and calculate it independently. I don't care how we draft it, it's. It's it's easy to draft either way, um, but we will need to do that, so if you approve it, it should be with the direction to. Um, to amend it so that we have a calculation to address taxes, incremental increases.
But Mark, you have gone through this with the attorneys for Pure Liquors at this point, and this is kind of preliminary agreed to where we are. Knowing that we also have a sixty-day window within which this would have to be approved. Uh, the taxes and the tax issue, there is no, there are no taxes, it's not like we are passing through taxes because. We're paying taxes, there's no taxes that we're paying, so um, I just think that, yeah, I I think that. If, I just think if a future council wants to have that conversation with Pure Liquors and wants to amend this, I think that would be the time to do that. Um, but I think, based on my uh experience in this situation, I think. They waited pretty patiently to be able to have a longer-term lease, and I think this language is pretty much where. Um, in terms of your conversations with the attorney for Pure Liquors, where both sides are, so um. You know, I think that should be something that should be discussed down the road, but I would not be in favor of making that an amendment of that kind tonight.
And Mark?
Yes. Can we just connect it to CPI and that, and just have a CPI flat rate every year?
Yeah, you could, you could do it any number of ways.
And I I know, but that would be the easiest, wouldn't it?
Uh, that's an easy way to do it.
You know, and then, uh, I mean, we're just continuing the lease from Gilbane. To the town, we're not changing anything, so us, us, you know, using the tax component isn't adding anything. Just because we don't pay taxes to ourselves, doesn't mean a commercial uh lease tenant can't pay taxes for their portion of that bill. I mean, I think that's reasonable, does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable, I think the way it's drafted is it's, it's, you know, it's small dollars, so, you know, you could, we could look at it and and increase. You you could, if you wanted to, you could increase the base rent, you know.
Right.
Whatever you wanted to do, twenty dollars or something, twenty dollars a year, fifty dollars a year, a hundred dollars a year, whatever the increment. Would have been, it, again, it's small dollars, but if that's what you wanna do, we can do that, or you can kinda capture it. And make the increase for their, for the extended period slightly higher, so um, you can get the money any number of ways.
I mean, the big argument is that we're taking the commercial property out of the tax rolls.
Yeah.
So we're not taking that portion of the property we purchased off the tax rolls, so I'm trying, you know.
Yeah.
That was one of the big arguments, so let's keep it on the tax rolls.
They're only responsible for incremental increases.
Understood.
Year over year, so we're not talking about, they're not, they're not skating on years worth of taxes, they're skating on.
I agree, hundreds, I get it, I get it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. What's uh, anybody know the, the bond initiative, uh? That um, not the bond initiative, that voter initiative? Anybody know what number that is about the building, about you need a uh. You know, voter approval, the buy or sell.
Uh, a building? If you give me a moment.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, you're talking about the local questions on the November?
Yeah, the one that, the one that states that you need voter approval. Through a.
I think it was Winter's um.
Right.
Initiative, uh, Terry, to sell assets.
I got it, okay, just a moment.
Terry, we can get back to that, cuz that's kind of not part of this conversation.
Oh, it is, it is part of the conversation, it was brought up, Matt.
You need to know the number, I mean, you know what ballot number it is, that's something we can give you at any time, I don't know.
Well, I'd like to announce right now.
Well, we can announce that in two minutes, but like, we can finish this conversation without, whether it's ballot number one, two, or three.
It was brought up, I wanna know what ballot number it is.
So she's gonna get it, but we're gonna continue the conversation.
We can continue the conversation.
Is there, um, yeah, geez, do we have um, any comment from the public, Mr. uh, I'm gonna ask our moderator?
Uh, if you do, uh, first is Karen Shavshelowitz.
Alright, name and address, please, for the record.
Karen Shavshelowitz, I totally disagree with um, you selling the building or leasing it, I should say. To um, to Pure Liquor, I'm total, totally in disagreement with that. Is there any way you could postpone this decision until after the election? Because obviously you three have been very anti-library and expanding the library right along. And this was previous to the pandemic, which is gonna make that added space all the more important to this community. Seems like you're putting one business over the needs of many families, many seniors. Many patrons that use that library, and I'm sick and tired of it, and I wanna thank you, Matt, for not running for town council again. Cuz I don't know what you can um say you've accomplished during your administration. And um, and you did come in number three, Jesse came in number one. And Lima came in number four, and Mova came in number five, shame on you all.
I think we, I think we need to dispense with the shame on you rhetoric all the time, it's getting a little exhausting, Dan, who do we have next?
Next is Stanley Wojciechowski.
Stanley, name and address for the record, please.
Stan Wojciechowski, uh, Austin Nick Road. I'm glad you are investigating the cost in detail, cuz that just shows you we're into a quagmire of. Money problems on this thing, and I'm sure you can fix it. Uh, but I guess that brings us to the question like Karen said. Uh, I don't know if I want my grandson, five-year-old grandson, running around a parking lot. Where somebody's gonna drive, drive in there, kinda high or half-high on some booze, you know, I I don't know. And for sure, we should not throw up here, Lakers, we need to throw out the idea of putting the library there. Throw out that idea and look for more appropriate space. Uh, right now, temporarily, we have three locations for a library, one in each school. And I think we must leave our children. And I think we must leave our children in the school libraries for everybody's health reasons, short term. But even long term, they were should visit, they should utilize their school libraries. All right. Now, if others and the elderly want a place to gather and have fun talking or whatever, then maybe we ought to build an addition to the community center and make it a library addition. You know, that is all other ideas, but you know, she's right. We shouldn't have our kids running around in the parking lot where some drugs could be go, some not, not very healthy people going in there. But it's, it's the library that needs to be relocated, not Pier Liquors. We need businesses in the center of town that pay taxes. And we're taking away for potential businesses in the future. It hasn't happened yet. But sooner or later, Gilbane or somebody will wake up and we need taxpaying businesses there, not a library there. Get the library. And I understand it's a 500-year flood zone, but I'm sure that during some floods, you're going to have water all around that library. All those streets will be full of water and we'll have an island with a library there. So we need to come away from there and reconsider. We reconsider because of the virus. We reconsider because of the libraries, because of the package store issue. The package store is the person that should stay there and hopefully others will come there and give us some taxpaying businesses. So that's what needs to really happen here. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to ask our moderator if there is another member of the public would like to speak.
There is Catherine Siliberto.
All right, Catherine, name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Siliberto, 48 Earl's Court. I think the amount being charged per month seems low to me. People across the street from me are paying $2,500 a month a wrench, no utilities for a nine-month lease. This is an income generating property. I admit, I don't know that much about commercial leases, but it just seems low. The other thing, there's a lot of signatures missing on these agreements here, and I'm wondering when they're going to be signed and when this agreement is going to get to the court and when the court's going to affirm them. Because again, as Jill said, there's a question on the ballot. And the question on the ballot pretty much says, if people agree that this building should not be leased or sold or whatever, but leased specifically, then what does that mean in relation to this lease you're giving them tonight? If, if there's a vote that says, no, this can't be done, and yet you're giving them a lease, I don't know how a ballot question would affect it. And common sense, okay, they signed the lease before the ballot question, but you know, there'll be some kind of a ridiculous outcry, will the people, blah, 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 and all that other stuff. I mean, what does this mean? What does that ballot question mean in relation to giving them a lease today?
Ballot question voting would be prospective either way, whether, not any of those, it would be prospective, just, just to answer that question. And wouldn't go backwards.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't really trust this group not to sue or whatever. And there's nothing in this agreement that precludes them from suing if, if there's a change or terminating their lease in any way. And that's, that's what concerns me. The other side of it is, is I'll tell you this, if you look at Andrews versus the city of Providence, they just ruled, the rounds Supreme Court just ruled that settlement agreements are inviolate. You cannot change them. You cannot make laws to try to change them. So I think that Pier Liquor maybe has some recourse that way, but I'm still concerned about that ballot question. That's all I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else from the public?
There is. Next is Paul.
All right, name and address, please, for the record.
Paul Van Prost, Seven Windward Circle. This is really dirty politics on the part of the library people. Because you have two town council candidates forcing a settlement right before the election. Pier Liquor is just a ping pong ball caught in the middle. And you've got, you know, Mr. Murray there posturing to make sure he checks his reelection boxes off. And it's really terrible to show you how awful the fight has become and how the library people will do anything to win, including squeezing a mom and pop bit. So I will not say the S-word, Mr. Mannix, but it is really unfortunate and sad.
Thank you, Mr. Don Frillo.
Thanks, Sharon.
I have the answer to Mr. Murray's question.
Yes.
So just, just to be sure that I don't misinterpret anything, the first local ballot question will be on the matter of recall. The second local ballot question will be amending chapter 42 in the Code of Ordinances to require the library at the Belmont Building. Local question number three is the one that restricts the power to sell property. And local question number four is the resolution requiring that the library would be at the Belmont Building and the space occupied by Pier Liquors.
Okay, so it's number three where you need a ballot initiative to buy and sell property before the town council can buy and sell property. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay, and that's number three. So everybody in TV land, vote no on ballot number three.
All of them. Vote no on all of them, not that one.
And I just want to get something clear. Again, again, me and Ray Renaud wanted to place the library in the O'Brien wing of the elementary school. It's the right size. We own it. Two million out of the gate. We could have dissected the school from that building, that portion of that building. The city of Westport, Mass. did exactly the same thing. It was Matt Mannix who voted to put it in the pier. And I swore if it goes in the pier, that liquor store is not going anywhere. I am, I had no time said or implied or directed of moving that business out of the pier location. So I just want to get that clear. So I don't know if that's another campaign box that I just checked. But I just want to keep consistent of all the nonsense. Try to keep up with all the nonsense over the last couple of years. So the rhetoric that we're trying to chase that business out is, is unfounded. So.
Well, it's on the ballot, and I would say put it up by the
Vote no on three.
Vote no on all of them. Put it up by the community center where it's affordable to the town and the public. Everybody knows it. We own the land, no fees.
You have wetlands up there. You just, you just put a bike path right through the lot you're supposed to have. You're talking another 10 years there, Rick. I don't think I'll be alive by the time we get this thing built.
Well, you might not. Yeah. So Karen Shabshalowicz, I agree with you. We can put a library up there. I've always been for a library. You say I'm not for a library, for a library up by that community center. Where? We can put that transportation system together that you're asking for, Karen. We can work with the community center and the library and after-school programs. Have recreation, a bike path, everything right at your hands, better than Tivitan Library. And by the way, check on Tivitan. They're not doing that well. But anyway, we could have it all there. And for the taxpayers, you heard some numbers the other day on the $400 a square foot. But I'm telling you, you can build a library up there. I've talked to many contractors, a four to $6 million project with ease. And if, if we can get 50% reimbursement, because it's brand new, you get 50. But I'm going to tell you right now, the state is 877 million deficit, almost a billion dollars. Do you think OLS and library services are going to be the first ones in line to get a check to reimburse all these library projects? I doubt it very much. So let's be careful because as you've heard from OLS, anything that OLS doesn't cover, or we start to build once we sign, you, the taxpayers, will be responsible for the full dollar amount of what this project will cost. It will come out of your taxpayer money. So remember that. So if it's a big amount of money, taxes are going to go up and they're going to go up extremely. And other areas of this town will have to take the recourse of being cut. And right now, we can't afford to cut anything in this town. We're at bottom line now. Thank you.
So if we executed the bond and the RFP, we'd probably be reimbursed for that 2.4 million. So that's a fact. That is a, that is a fact. So, you know, and then you got the, the state that got into the program. If you didn't did the, the last two years, we would have had this up to 50% paid by the state of that 2.8 million. So, so, you know, in your zeal to save money, you're going to cost us money. Never mind the lawsuits and all the other nonsense that's been associated with this, with this effort. So, you know.
If OLS doesn't get the money, the taxpayers are on the dole.
You know what? I don't think it matters if OLS is in and out. It doesn't matter if OLS is in and out. There's people out there who want to donate money. They're mad as hornets. And you know what? I think they're going to step up and make up the difference because it just matters on it because of this nonsense. We're a joke in there again, in the state of Rhode Island and throughout the country because of this nonsense.
Donate. Get two, three, four million. That's what I'm hoping for. Donate. But if OLS doesn't get the money, the taxpayers are going to be on the dole for all of it. Just remember that.
Well, and then they're going to remember, they're going to remember the TC three. Thank you.
Well, there'll be a new TC three, TC four, TC five. Who knows, you know? But I know one thing, I'm about low taxes and watching the people's dollars. So watch that because it's coming.
Vote, vote no on three. Thank you.
Vote no on all of them.
All right. So we've gone a little bit of field of the motion, but I'm going to call the vote on the motion before us, starting with Mr. Lima.
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
Real quick, before I vote, I did want to bring it back to the topic at hand because it did get off track there. Regarding the questions on the ballot, three of them are related to that building. None of them would preclude Pier Liquor from leasing that space if we make a deal and they sign a lease before the election. None of them will. And that's clear if anyone wants to read those, those items. It's not going to affect that lease if it's already signed in place before then. So as for the, this motion, I'll vote yes.
Ms. Lawler?
You know what? I want them to buy this building on the upstate.
Matt Mannix, aye. Motion approved four to zero. Our next item is a motion to authorize an increase in compensation for poll workers for the general election to be held on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Is there a motion?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
Discussion. So this is an item that I put on and I'm concerned about many of our workers who are going out and, and taking the time to work these, work and check people in as they vote, live voting. I think the live voting is still very important. So I want to definitely encourage people to come forward and volunteer. I know that many have already done so. I want to thank the people who worked on primary day. And on primary day, because I know that that was, you know, that was, that was the first day that we had since the pandemic and since the presidential preference on this. So I know it's only a small amount of an increase, but I want to at least show that we, it still stays within the budget and it shows that we are, appreciate the work of these individuals. And I know it's a long, long day for them. So any comments from the council, starting with Mr. Lima?
I have none. They, they do a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Murray?
It was a tough slog that day. I'm on board with this one.
Mr. Pew?
Yep, sounds good to me.
Ms. Lawler?
I'm fine. I thank them for their service.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone from the public? I'm going to ask our moderator.
There is Sue Amaruso.
All right, name and address, please, for the record.
Actually, my hand up was up before you took the vote because you didn't ask for additional comments from the public. So I'll just skip my comment. But my hand was up for that, not for now. Thank you.
And each time since I've been doing these meetings, I go through the council initially, and then I go to the public and then I call the vote. I've done nothing different since the beginning of the pandemic. We spent time on this. We spent time practicing on Zoom. So I just want to be very clear on that. So this whole thing of people not being recognized, it's been the same format. I do my best to go through down the council initial comments. I know it's a little slow. Then we go to the public and then we have final commentary from the council and then we vote. That's how it's worked. All in favor of this item, unless there's any, I'm going to start with Mr. Lima.
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
S P U, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, aye.
Matt Mannix, aye. Motion approved five to zero. And we have a motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading and ordinance in amendment of chapter 14, article four of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled Alcoholic Beverages, specifically to define the required distance between Class A licensed establishments. Is there a motion?
Jill Lawler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
All right, unless there's any new information anyone has from the first reading, I'm going to, is there any new information from anyone from the council?
I have none.
All right. All right, hearing none, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, Mr. Lima?
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
I'll say, aye.
Mr. Pew?
Aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Jill Lawler, aye.
Matt Mannix, aye. Motion approved five to zero. And finally, we have our period of public comment. We encourage people to comment on any issues that the town is facing and try to keep your comments concise and to a three-minute limit. Please conduct yourself in a worthy, respectful fashion. I'm going to go to our moderator for public comment. Do we have any hands raised?
We do. First is Margaret Rogers.
All right, name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, Meg Rogers, 68 Earl's Court. So it's too bad that you called the motion council president because I actually did have new information. And I heard you back on October 17th, you said if there was new information, we could add it in at the time of the second reading of that ordinance change. Well, there is new information. That night when Mr. Lima introduced his agenda item, which will supersede state law now, something about it made my stomach churn and the timing of it was especially concerning. And now this is the new information. On August 17th, the very same day as the town council meeting, a $500 check from the owner of O'Neill's Liquor, Martin O'Neill, was deposited into the campaign finance account of the sponsor, Council Lima. On August 25th, just eight days after the first reading, another check for $500 from Mr. O'Neill was deposited, this time into the campaign finance account of Council Lawler. On August 7th, a $200 donation check, a little bit earlier, came through to Ms. Lawler's campaign account, this time from the owner of another liquor store, Bonnet Liquors, for Mr. Sahagian. Now you will undoubtedly hear a defense from these people that it's perfectly legal to receive money in the form of campaign donations within the space of just a couple of weeks from owners of liquor stores who would, without a doubt, receive a direct benefit from expanding the 200-foot distance to one mile. But is it ethical? Does it pass the smell test? How does it appear? You know, if it swims like a duck and quacks like a duck, then it probably is a duck. Or perhaps in this situation, it quacks like a quid pro quo. Or perhaps this simply could be called greasing the palm, as they said in my old neighborhood. The people of Narragansett deserve to be represented by honest men and women, people who have integrity and who always avoid the perception, the perception. People who have integrity and who always avoid the perception, the perception of impropriety. Acting with ethics shows you respect all of the people whom you serve. Therefore, I was going to ask that that ordinance be withdrawn. Or at the very least, the counselors who accepted these donations recuse themselves and seek an advisory opinion from the state ethics commission. But that ship has sailed. They accepted the money and they voted for the ordinance. And it's sad because I would imagine, given that council president has aspirations to serve as a state senator, he would have preferred to pull this item so as to not let the questions and the activities surrounding the item blemish his own reputation. It's really very sad. Thank you. Good night.
Hey, do we have anyone else? I'm going to ask our moderator.
We do. Next is Stanley Wojciechowski.
All right, Stanley, name and address for the record, please.
Stanley Wojciechowski, Boston Nick Road. Uh, I, I, I was, I was hoping there would be some legal, uh, some legal situation, executive order that we could utilize to pull the Belmont location until it's analyzed a little more. You know, we've got new, when I worked in research, every day you would get new information on new situations. This virus is brought a completely new world out here. We've got new data. We've got new problems. And all the old calculations and numbers, you, you know, this, this new, this Belmont building just may not fit based on that virus potential and how long the virus is going to be here. I know the president says right away, but maybe it's another year or two. Who knows? But we should postpone the whole activity until at least the virus is gone for sure. And, and consider potential problems with a confined space that is there right now. Like you say, if you would move it out, uh, out where you have a lot more space and a lot more parking space, it just seems to be a much better idea. So I'm asking someone to contact some legal, get an executive order to stop the, stop that design, stop that idea until other issues are vetted and all the other problems are solved, mainly the virus. I don't think I want, I don't want children going and being mixed with old people. You know, that you can't, you can't stop children from, uh, from spitting all over the books and you're not going to wipe the books and tables every time the child goes and, uh, old people, you're just not going to mix people like you did in the past. And I think that's not only a one year problem, but this might be a forever problem. But you don't want to mix youngsters with the old people. And at the very least, uh, you know, I see the, the option is the library utilizes their staff to staff the schools. So the students, the kids have their library, their own library fixed for themselves without old people being there and some kind of cross contamination. But at the very least, I say we got to stop, stop right here. We have a reason to stop everything right here now until we further look at what we need to do to get it right. Stop the, you know, and in research, I had a fellow working on a project for 19 years and he was still working on a project to make fiberglass two by fours. You know, and he had partial solutions and maybe this and maybe that. It just never happened, you know? And the same thing here, we've got to re, relook, recalculate, relook at what we got going on here. We can't, we can't move on as it is. So I, I asked for the executive order. Can I, can I counsel president? Or someone, get the governor, get somebody, make an executive order to take that off the table until a, a more thorough analysis can be made and the cost put onto it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anyone else? I'm going to ask our moderator.
We do. Next is Phil.
Uh, name and address, please, for the record. All right. You might be muted. We're going to move on to the next person and come back to you. Who's, uh, next? Name and address for the record.
Next is Paul.
All right, Paul, go ahead.
Oh shit.
All right, we'll do Paul and then we'll go back to that.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Paul. Uh, Mr. Don Frillo, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, the previous speaker talked about, um, in very, very Shakespearean dramatic fashion, talk to us about decanting pain contributions uh, from people who happen to own liquor stores. You know, that's public information. And so conflated with saying greasing somebody's palm is really intellectually dishonest and deliberate. You know, Mr. Murray has benefited greatly from selling homes from people from the libraries, selling the fundraisers home. Didn't hear people about that. You know, the problem is when people don't disclose. And through the election laws, it has been disclosed. So, you know, it's just another shot that people are taking and particularly this person does like to take quite often. So, um, it's really no big deal.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Anfrillo. Who do we have?
I'd like to come, can I comment on that, Matt? Can I comment on that? Yeah, I, I do, I, I, I am in the business of selling houses and I'm doing, I am selling the, um, the fundraising fundraiser for the library's home. Uh, and the reason he picked me as an agent is because of my honesty through this whole debacle. So there's no quid pro quo. It is just a matter of, uh, upfront and honesty. So, I mean, if, if you think that's collusion, then God save us. Thank you. Thanks, Sharon.
Why does he keep calling Sharon? Uh, there are a number of other, Patrick also, Anne Irons home you sold. There, there are a lot. So for Meg Rogers to make those remarks.
What does that got to do with selling Anne Irons home? What, what does that have to do with any of this?
Maybe you should just let Jill finish. I know, we know you're purer than the driven snow, Patrick, but maybe Jill can comment. Thank you.
It, it, it's just there have been a lot of people that, that have, um, in the house. Obviously, I'm in the business of selling homes too. So I see what's going on. And there are people that have been associated with the library that you've sold their homes, many. So it's.
Name one besides Dan. Name one.
One of the, of the person who wrote to my company requesting I be fired, that you sold their house. That's one.
Who's that? Who is that?
I'm not going to name names.
I don't even know, I don't even know what you're talking about. I don't. Listen, I'm not into this big collusion theory. You know, I mean, if you guys are mixed up in some, don't try to deflect your, your nonsense onto me. Okay. Again, again, I always wanted the liquor store to stay. Okay?
Patrick.
But your flip flop, your flip flop, your vote, we all remember your flip flop.
No, no, that, no, 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 no. These people wanted to buy a condo. Matt, you, these people wanted to count, buy a condo. I took a bad deal, turned it into a good deal. That's not a flip flop. That's called serving your town. That's, that's conservatism. That is conservatism. Something that you don't know nothing about. You're the narcissistic party and you're not a conservative.
You're narcissistic. You just told, told everyone how honest and perfect you were.
I did not. The reason this buyer picked me is because of my honesty. That's what he said.
I mean, that's something. All right, we're going to go, we're going to go to our next, uh, speaker. I'm asking moderator.
Uh, next is Phil.
How many meetings are left?
Yeah, okay, hey. Can, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I apologize for the te- technical error earlier. I thought that, um, Mr. Holland would unmute me automatically. In any case, I'd like to comment on the, uh, political contributions made by the two liquor stores to two counselors. Um, I, I get it that it's not illegal, but I, I have to agree with one of the speakers that the optics are terrible. This reeks of quid pro quo or pay to play. I also agree with her that it's unethical, indefensible and demonstrates poor judgment, uh, on your parts, counselors, Lawler and Lima. Um, in a military court of law, you would be under the uniform code of military justice facing court martial uh, for conduct unbecoming. I believe this represents a misuse of your power and a violation of the trust that your constituents have placed in you. And Matt, I'm sorry, but I'm going to use the word shame. Shame on you. And shame on anyone who thinks that this, this kind of behavior is acceptable. Anyone who's raised children or has been in a leadership position in corporate America or in the military knows how critical it is to lead by example. Your behavior demonstrates unfamiliarity with these basic concepts. Counselors Lima and Lawler, your actions are disgraceful and they clearly do not embody the character of this town or of its residents. You're an embarrassment to us all and I would call upon you now to resign from the town council, the town of Narragansett. Thank you.
Right.
Well, that's been the goal all along, hasn't it? You did get the resignations you wanted for two years with your angry.
Right. Let me just say something. Again, people have made donations. You're going to see some other donations too, from some other businesses that I received today. And I know there are other council person sitting on this council that's not Jill, it's not Matt, that are going to receive s- same money from the same person that owns a business. This is why it's put on file so that you can see who gives us money. And it's legal to give money. It's very legal to give money, whether you own a business, whether you're a household individual. And by the way, the checks come out of their personal accounts, not the business accounts. They come out of their personal accounts. So again, if it was illegal, we wouldn't be doing it. And this isn't the military. Let's just get that straight. Cause if it was the military, we wouldn't have accepted it. We would have accepted it by the laws in which whatever the military writes. But I'm just letting you know, everything we're doing, people giving us money, the way we're receiving it, the way we're recording it, if you understand the, uh, campaign finance, you'd understand that, yes, a lot of businesses give money, right? How, who does Gil Bain give to? We've been on this one before. Who does Gil Bain give to? You want to bring that one out? Second best, biggest donor to David Cicilline. But that's okay. People give money. So get it out there. Make sure you're telling the truth across the board with everybody who runs in public office, if you're going to put the money out there. All right? So look at who Gil Bain gives to and then tell me what's going on. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask our moderator if there's anyone else from the public.
Next is Sue Amoruso.
All right. Name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, Sue Amoruso, West Bay Drive. Uh, what a tough act to follow you guys are. Um, you know, Mr. Manix, I think you got way too personal on my issue with the hand up or down. I said I didn't get called on. In no way did it reflect upon you. So I don't think you need to go through that whole spiel about how procedure. My thing was there's maybe something wrong with the system that the hands are not being recognized. I've had it happen to me before. Not often, but that was just it. And I said, I don't want to comment because my hand was up before I didn't get called on. End of story. Uh, Mr. Lima, also, you keep on saying that, you know, we've got a great library there. Remember, they won that contest. Well, the contest was the Reader's Digest nicest places in America, but it had had nothing to do with the physical building. Matter of fact, they, they said you, it's nondescript. Um, it was about the staff. The staff won the contest. So we should stop saying, you know, they won. And if you look at it, they said in the Reader's Digest contest, they said, we are looking for a spirit. Buildings do not have spirit. We're looking for a spirit of giving. And if you're looking for it now, it does say it's such a nondescript building, you might go right past it. And that's word for word and I can send it to you. Um, also you keep on throwing out these figures. I'm still waiting for you actually to put them up on a screen like Patrick Murray did with a presentation and show in black and white so that the public can follow your figures. You just say, oh, take it from here, take it from there. That doesn't suffice. Patrick put it up, graphics, nice neat numbers so we could all see. There was no shuffling there. And Jill, you said the town shouldn't be in business of leasing a building. Well, we were going to be putting.
To a liquor store, I said.
Okay, well, the food court that we were going to do, we were going to become a bank. The town of Narragansett was going to become a bank because the person in Connecticut, the deal fell through. He could not get a loan and we were going to loan him this money, the town. That's a fact. And suppose they started serving alcohol on the food court. For, so for whatever. We have taken on that to me, I thought was so stupid that we were going to do that. Thank God it didn't go through. And all this thing about will all this pay, all this not pay? The money is in the state budget and some funds are not going to be taken off to balance the state budget. Will Olus maybe not give us 50%? Will they give us 40%, 30%? We can't tell, but there's no point in saying, oh yeah, your taxes are going to go up because this is going to happen. We don't know. So talk about what we do know. And to one of the callers who called in, how much research do you need to do for a library? 12 years of research. And they looked at the existing library and our, the Abcor person said you're going to have a very, very big building with a small parking lot. And he said they were all similar in costs. And then he did talk about the Belmont building with, um, something I'd never heard of. Line of sight, this is all the new libraries, what they want. He said the Belmont building had it, but there was no big discrepancy between the cost of building one or another. And that was from the town person. And putting it by the senior center, it's wetlands. They had even trouble placing the bike path over there because of DEM regulations. So 12 years of research has gone into this. And those sites, people say, well, look over here, look over here and well meaning people. But if you look at the timeline, all these sites have been looked at and the cheapest one is the Belmont building. Maybe not the cheapest, cheapest, not the Abcor guy. So I just think there's so much, um, discord here. So many people trying to prove their point. And this whole liquor store thing, I was very surprised about that, but I'm like, when that thing passed, I thought, I just thought it was odd. I still think it's odd to put a restriction on that about the mileage and stuff. I just thought, well, I don't know why they're doing that. It seems silly to me. So maybe there's more to it. I don't know. But that's my list. And just remember, the library building did not win that contest. It's the staff and they have continued to be remarkable. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask our moderator if we have anyone else who wishes to speak.
Before that, I, I just want to respond since it's now come up three times. Um, the reason people give money to people, they give money to people who they respect and who they trust, right? So still, sure, we live in a small town. We're all going to know people and it's, it is public information. So there's nothing there. The other thing that was not said, and I want to point out, the first speaker who, um, Meg Rogers, she's a former chair of the Republican Town Committee here in town. And the second speaker, Phil Kotay, is the current vice chair of Republican Town Committee here in town. His wife is also a member of the Library Board of Trustees. I think those points need to be placed out there because as Mr. Manix stated, the goal all along from, from this, from when the library happened, when we, when we started to sell the building was try to see who they get rid of, myself, Rick or Matt. That was goal all along and they're still, they're still right now on an eve of another election. They can't give it up. They're just going to be as mean as they possibly can until the bitter end. That's it.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public?
There is. Next is Ellen.
Um, name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, Ellen Korma, 109 West Moreland Street. So Jill, talk about being rude. How about the time when I stood in the meeting and you were rolling your eyes at me? How about that? And how about you, Matt? Remember how you guys yelled at me to sit down? I couldn't even give my three minutes. Wow. Who's rude? I think you better take a look in the mirror. But that's not my point right now. I have to say, Jill, again, people were rolling their eyes when they saw about the money and your checks. Not a bit surprising, really. It's not. Of course. I think more people would have realized if you, your vote was up for sale, they probably would have done it sooner. But that's not the reason why I'm addressing it. Ricky and Jill and Matt, you claim to be for the library? If you're really for the library, then why don't you reinstate the budget? Ricky, you go on and on about by the community center. If you really want it. If you really want it, if you say you're for the library, then reinstate the building. You know what, or the budget? You know what this smells like, Ricky? Just what you did two years ago. Two years ago, you had all that verbiage, how you were so pro-liberty. What have you done since then? You cut the budget, you refused to give pension, you even threatened to limit healthcare. Yes, Ricky, you're not pro-liberty, you are anti-liberty. Own it up for a change. And by the way, Ricky, I worked for the DOD, I worked on a military base. Yep, you know what? It's a good thing you're not working on a military base. That's it. My last point, again, if you really would like to be pro-liberty, then reinstate the budget. Thank you.
Interesting, you know, I got, I, I, it's really funny how they, you know, want to come after me about the budget. But again, as the people know, four hundred thousand went into the budget. And by the way, the retirement, so that people understand, it was not the council that I was elected on. It was the council before that. So look at the records that did not give the pension to the two existing people that don't have a pension. Was not this council, it never came up under this council to vote down pension for library employees. Was the previous council. And Mr. Murray was part of that council, and they had a good argument on why. And I've always said, library people should become actual town employees. Get into the, um, into one of the unions, come into the unions. Get actual salary ranges. Get percentages based every year on union contracts. Get definite healthcare, get a definite pension system. That's what I'm for. So if you're, if you really don't want to do that, I can't understand why you wouldn't. I mean, to be under a library board that could change on consistency, and you're depending on them, um, I wouldn't throw all my cards on somebody that says, well, we'll take care of you, don't worry about it. And as far as, um, the community center, yeah, I'm about the community center. That's one of the options. It's a great option. It offers more than anything that any other library in the state can offer as far as resources and being able to share and be able to really take a good look at the taxpayer dollars so that we can take a dollar from every taxpayer and make sure we get the most out of it. So again, um, the budget part of it, you people left a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars up at OLS on the table. And now you want me to instate and tell the taxpayers of this town that I need a hundred and eighty-one thousand out of their pocket after you left it up at the state, out of their pocket because you didn't want to take that money? And then the ninety-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars that you paid your fundraiser out of library budget taxpayer money, that should have come out of fundraising money. So when you calculate all those figures together, you come up with more than enough money that it takes to run your library because, again, you have an individual that when all the town department heads got pushed into a different healthcare package, a person in the library didn't, and they should have. That's costing the taxpayers of this town six thousand dollars more a year. And for the last twelve years, it's cost seventy-two thousand. So if you want to talk about budgets and numbers, your four hundred thousand, your one seventy-seven, your one eighty-one that you left on the table, the ninety-three that you paid the fundraiser, that you should know, should have come out of fundraising money, and the six thousand dollars that you continue to pay for a healthcare package that no person working in the town has. There are people who have retired that have that package, I won't deny that. You would have a total of eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in your budget if you budgeted your money in a proper manner. Now, you may say, I don't believe that, uh, I'm not a proper manner to budget your money. I agree, but you shouldn't be taking taxpayer money, leaving it on a table, and then paying people to do fundraising for a building that should come out of the fundraising money. Taxpayers pay how many times? Once, twice, three times? That's ridiculous. So as I said before, the library's doors will not close. If you need extra money, we are going to manage it with the town manager and the finance director because we're not going to waste any more money by writing these open checks. And off they go, and who knows where they go. That's why you had big fund balances before, and that wasn't fair to the taxpayers of this town. That's all. And if the taxpayers don't want me to sit in a seat and not watch their money carefully, then they will bring it out at the next election. But I'm here for the taxpayers to watch their money and make sure we do a good job at everything we do. And we can build the best library that the state of Rhode Island has ever seen if we'd all get on the right page and do it in a proper area that the town already owns the land, and we don't pay all these fees, and we get that pier back to where it becomes property that's taxable, maybe get more commodity down there and businesses down there. Boone Street wants to expand, so it would expand right down. But that's what I'm about, watching the taxes of this town. And I want the people of this town to realize, I want low taxes, especially now. I don't want to lose one family or one business in this town because of COVID. And we have to work with these people and make sure that they can pay their tax bills, their mortgages, and the businesses in the same manner. We have to keep them. We can't let them go, and we can't let them get bought out by investment companies because they want to build dormitory structures in neighborhoods. That's what I'm about. So if you don't like that, fine. And I'm about the town beach, save our town beach. We don't need outsiders on that town beach.
Matt, can we, can we spare us the campaign speech, please? Spare us the campaign speech, please.
And we need to stay on that town beach. That's for residents first, and we will have non-residents participating. But it's not going to be strictly all the outsiders taking over the town. Thank you.
Don't forget animals, Rick. You gotta, you gotta plug the dog lovers.
You're still registered? Yeah, Patrick, no.
You gotta plug the dog and cat lovers there, Rick.
Yeah, did you get yours registered? No.
No, probably not.
Is there anyone else from the public? I'm going to ask our moderator.
There is, next is Karen Shapshalowicz.
Go ahead, name and address, please, for the record.
Matt, what part of no don't you understand? And what part of professional, the word professional, don't the three of you understand? You were elected to serve the public, and I don't know where you got your ethics from, but, um, it's, I, I don't think you even understand the word professional. And if you would refer to the Sullivan versus the New York Times, public officials are supposed to be held to a higher standard. And I don't think, you're, you're treating the public really poorly, and you get very defensive along with your pals, showing all your venom for the library supporters, showing all your venom for Mr. Gil Bain. I'm sick of the venom, I'm sick of the name-calling. We as public citizens have the right to question our public officials, and we have the right to expect professional courtesy. If you don't like it, get out of the arena, and I sure hope you're all voted out of the arena. And I really agree with what Meg Rogers and Phil Cody and Ellen said. And I didn't give any campaign, campaign contributions. And Matt, you always manage to put in your spin and get the last word politically. Mirror, mirror on the wall, who's the fairest of them all? I wouldn't say the three of you are.
Thank you.
Is there more?
Thank you, I love it.
Next.
Go ahead.
Sorry, next is Joan.
Uh, name and address, please, for the record.
Joan Mulligan, fifty-nine Bow Rock, Anderson. I just wanted to comment that I thought open forum was the townspeople to their subject and not having that from the town council. This is the first town council that has ever commented back to people making open comments. And we just listened to like thirty minutes of campaign speeches. It's ridiculous, this is supposed to be for us. And you, Matt, have been calling people, closing down, making motions to adjourn when there are still people waiting at the podium, and when it was still town council, when we could have it on-site. But in the meantime, you let, you're the president, you let people babble and babble up they say three hundred times from their, from their seats. I've heard that speech from Rick at least five times, and this is supposed to be open comment. It's not open comment with you people. Thank you.
Council members can speak during public comment as well. They, they can, that's totally within their purview. Um, who's next? I'm going to ask our moderator.
Can't hear you, Dan. Yeah, you have no volume. Dan has no volume. Nope. Nothing.
Matt, he's the only one that makes sense.
There you go.
Um, the remaining people with their hands up are Ellen, Joan, and Sue Amoruso. I believe they've all spoken already.
Yes, they have.
That's it.
I think Sue spoke, she did speak, right?
Yep.
She did, yeah.
All right, the one I get.
Tip, make a motion to adjourn.
Actually, it's a motion to retire to executive session of the town council in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-two dash forty-six dash five subsection A, litigation in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws forty-two dash forty-six dash five subsection A two, Narragansett twenty-one hundred incorporated at all versus the town of Narragansett at all. First, I'll ask for the motion.
The Lawlers still moved.
Is there a second?
Richard Lima, second.
And I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, I'm going to start with Mr. Lima.
Richard Lima, aye.
Mr. Murray?
Patrick Murray, aye.
Mr. Pew?
Jesse Pew, aye.
Ms. Lawler?
Bill Lawler, aye.
Matt Mannix, aye. Motion approved, five to zero. And thank you, everyone, thank you, Terry, thank you, Dan, thank you, Mr. Terry. Have a great night, everybody.
Council members, use your alternate login information to go to the executive session. It's for the council members and solicitors and the town manager.
Terry, I have the, the passcode, but I, I do need, if you could please forward the, the link for the meeting itself?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else need it for the executive session?
Nope.
Joe, send it.
Okay. Hey, Will.
George Allen signing off.
Okay.
Trying to go to the next one.